And if you can remember to switch it off after you stop speaking, because once so many are on, it blocks the system and none of them work. And you'll probably need to remind me about that as much as I will need to remind you, because I'm not great at it. I will get used to it one day. So, welcome to the Licensing Subcommittee. We'll start with some quick introductions. I'm David Barker. I'll be chairing the Subcommittee this morning. And I'm flanked by the members of the committee who will introduce themselves.
Good morning. I'm councillor Lewis Chinchen.
And I'm councillor Sean Edmire Richards.
Could I ask the officers of the council working with us this morning to introduce yourselves, please?
Morning. Samantha Bond, legal adviser to the Subcommittee.
Morning. I'm John Turner from Democratic Services here to record today's decision.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jane Gough from the Licensing Service to read the report this morning.
And just briefly, we have Ruth Milson here, who is a member of the Subcommittee, but attending today just to get some experience of this. So, almost a member of the public. Reduced to being a member of the public. What have things come to? And could I now just ask the applicants and the interested parties to also introduce yourselves just for the record, please?
Yes, good morning, everyone. My name's Tim Shield from John Gaunton Partners. I am solicitor representing the applicant company, Prime Land Limited, and I have with me Mr Khan, who is director of that company.
And good morning, everybody. My name is Peter Sefton, and I'm the Chair of Changing Chef, which is the residents' association for people living in the city centre.
Thank you. And you will see we have a set procedure for these hearings, and you will notice that at item four of that procedure, it says the solicitor to the committee will outline the procedure. So could I ask Samantha to do that, please?
Thank you, Chair. So hopefully you've all got a copy of the report. The procedure is just right at the back on page 47. So Jane, the licensing officer this morning, will just introduce the report to check that we're all happy with it and it's accurate. Obviously, that's why we're here today. If there are any issues with the report, if we just flag them up after she's presented it, and then we'll get everything amended for the record. We'll then head over to the interested party, Mr Sefton, to detail your relevant representations. I'm sure members and officers all have questions of you. With the leave of the Chair, the applicant and his representative may cross-examine you and ask you questions as well. We'll then head over to the applicant and Mr Shield to detail the application, provide clarification on the application, and respond to the representations made, both in the report and orally here today. Again, members and officers will ask questions of the applicant, and with the leave of the Chair from other parties present. The applicant will be given the opportunity to sum up the application if they wish, and will then take the options from Jane as detailed in the report. Members will then go into private session in order to take legal advice and consider the application. The decision of the Licensing Committee today will be given in accordance with the requirements of the Licensing Act 2003 and regulations made there. At any time during the process, members of the committee may request legal advice. So that can either be an open session, as we are now, or closed, where we'll figure something out with the technology and feed that back to you once you come back into the room. And the hearing is in public this morning, and as councillor Barker said, it has been live webcast this morning. And that's everything for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Could we have the report then, please, Jane?
Absolutely. Good morning, everybody. So we're gathered today for the, excuse me, for the determination of the application for grant of premises licence for the Devonshire Cat, 49 Rollington Street, Sheffield S1, 4HG. The application was received by the Licensing Service on the 15th of March 2022, and was submitted by Prime Land Limited, and is attached to Appendix A of this report. During the consultation period, the applicant has agreed conditions with South Yorkshire Police, and these can also be found in the report at Appendix B. The reason for referral today is that there's been an unresolved representation concerning the application from Peter Sefton on behalf of Changing Chef. Everybody's been invited to the committee today, as you can see, and are all present. The reason for the grant of the, sorry, the reason for this application being submitted was that the previous premises licence lapsed in error from a previous occupant. So this is just kind of to replace what was there before. So if you may, if I may, Chair, skip to the appeals section, which is at section eight. The Licensing Act 2003, section 181 and Schedule 5 makes provision for appeals to be made by the applicant and those making representations against the decision of the Licensing Authority to the magistrate's court. So the recommendations this morning, Chair, are that members carefully consider the representations made and take such steps as the Subcommittee consider appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives. Thank you.
Have members got any questions regarding the report at all? Could I just ask what 'lapsed in error' means?
Under the Licensing Act, if a company goes into administration, or dissolves, or goes bust, or whatever the terminology is, if the licence isn't transferred within 28 days of that happening, it automatically falls away. And it just came to like through annual fee notices and things like that, that the company was no longer there. I think it was throughout Covid, I think.
Thanks. Have the applicants got any questions regarding the report at all?
Nothing, but I will cover that point that you've just mentioned in my presentation.
Peter, do you have any questions regarding?
No, I don't at the moment. Thank you.
Then it's over to you to state your objections to us today.
Can I just say these haven't been, as far as I'm aware, they haven't been disclosed? I would like to see them before I decide what to... I'm merely stating that we haven't seen them before, and had they been disclosed in advance, we could have looked them in advance. I'm not saying I'm objecting, I'm just merely asking for the opportunity to look at them with my client. If it helps, I'm happy for these to go in. Could I keep these copies? Is that okay?
Okay, shall I begin? Thank you. As I said, I'm Chair of Changing Chef, the residents' association for the city centre. And I apologise for making you all come in this morning, but there is a very important principle involved with this licence application. I hope that by the time you leave the meeting, you will understand why those of us who live in the city centre want the council to join the dots together and make your developing plans for the city centre into a joined-up strategy. The city centre is changing rapidly under the exciting heart of the city plans being developed by our council. During the 17 years I've lived in the city centre, the population has increased from 17,000 to 20,000. It's now 25,000, and according to forecasts, it will be 35,000 by the end of this decade. And that is just inside the inner ring road. The council commissioned an 84-page report from consultants Deloitte that arrived last month, which explains that the success of modern city centres will revolve around a wide range of people living there, and living there in large numbers. Looking around us at the construction currently taking place just shows just how quickly Sheffield has already adopted this strategy, post the Sevenstone development collapse in 2014, 2015. As the recognised residents' association for the city centre, we at Changing Chef have been advocating this strategy for several years, a big increase in residential accommodation, and encouraging a wide range of people to come to live here. Lots of students, but also families, professional people, and retirees like me. And it's a great place to live if one's accommodation is comfortable and if you can get a good night's sleep. But there's always a but. And in this case, the but is the city council can't burn the candle at both ends. The city centre has been known as the place to go for a boozy night out, a place where people can drink a lot, lose their inhibitions, party in the street, and make a lot of noise. And in certain parts of the centre, that will always be the situation. We as residents accept that. But with the rise of residential density, the area inside the inner ring road can no longer be considered as open house for licensing. There is a quid pro quo to be accepted between the residents and the licensees. We're bringing a potential 35,000 customers, but since we live next door to you, we also need a good night's sleep, which means that licensed premises surrounded by residential accommodation should not be permitted to open into the middle of the night. If you've lived in the city centre, you'll know that a group of male students leaving a pub after a night out feel it's necessary to sing loudly, badly, and raucously. But sound travels upwards, and we can't sleep through that at 3.30am. Taking all these factors into account is why Changing Chef, on behalf of soon-to-be 35,000 residents, is requesting a different strategy for granting late licences within the inner ring road. What we propose is that existing late licences can retain grandparent rights to continue on their opening times, then if someone thinks of moving to live nearby, they can check the opening times and decide whether those times will interrupt their sleep. But those premises that apply for a new late licence in what is a densely populated area should not be permitted to open beyond midnight, owing to the proximity of residential accommodation. As I've said, this is a quid pro quo between the residents and the licensees. The heart of the city redevelopment is giving you access to 35,000 customers. Changing Chef believes this should be an exchange for midnight closing in heavily populated residential areas. If you can't make a profit by midnight in a residential area, you have the wrong business model. And if you want to stay open until 3.30am, you're in the wrong location. The Devonshire Cat, as the photographs that I've distributed show, is already in a densely populated area, with the new massive 364-apartment Kangaroo Works building opening later this year. The Devonshire Cat, in our opinion, is not a grandparent rights application. The old licence was given up by the previous operator. As we've heard, it lapsed. Whether it was in error or not, it lapsed. So we consider this to be a new application, and it's in an area that has changed dramatically into a large residential hub since the previous late opening licence was granted. We are pleased that the Devonshire Cat is reopening, but we firmly believe that it shouldn't be allowed to open beyond midnight under the heart of the city residential policy for our city centre, which is, after all, the council's policy. I repeat, we can't burn the candle at both ends. We either have a densely populated city centre, or we have an all-night licensing policy. But you can't have both, because people won't come to live here when they realise it's impossible to get a good night's sleep. So we hope that Licensing Committee will carefully consider the reasoning behind our objection and accept the need for new licence criteria now that the centre is changing so rapidly. The city centre is a great place to live as long as we can get a good night's sleep. Since this is an objection that seeks a new approach to licensing in the city centre, we think you might feel it necessary to put this application on hold while you consider these issues in the light of your heart of the city redevelopment plans. I'll be pleased to supply copies of this reasoning if you would like to have them, Chair, and I'll be happy to answer questions at the appropriate time.
Remember to turn my microphone on, and I'll open this up to questions then now. Sean, is there anything that you'd like to ask at this stage?
No, 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 I'm all right, actually.
Lewis?
Yes, please, Chair. In the objection, Mr Sefton, point one, you said that the applicant is applying to reopen under much longer hours to 3.30. Under the previous licence, it seems to me that the hours, the opening hours, were until 3.30. Please, could you explain what you meant by that?
The fact that the licence lapsed means this is a new licence application. And over the last 10 years, and particularly recently, the area around there has changed dramatically. So our argument is a new licence, a new residential area, it's time for a new change, it's time for new thinking by the council, because, as I said, you can't burn the candle at both ends. So that's the argument, that this is a new licence application, as far as we as the residents feel, and therefore it has to be considered under the current situation, not what happened when it was originally applied for.
Thank you, I understand. And just to be clear, in terms of what you're proposing, what would be acceptable to you, it would be up to midnight? You wouldn't accept anything beyond that?
I think the midnight licence applications, what I think will be said on this licence is three, sorry, three o'clock closing, but half an hour to get everybody out and send them home. And I think with the midnight licences, it's the same thing, midnight, half an hour to clear up and go home. We'd be very happy with that. That's quite acceptable. I mean, you know, if you're going to interrupt it with your sleep at the beginning of the night, that's not so bad. It's when you get interrupted with your sleep in the middle of the night that it's very unpleasant.
Thank you. That's, Chair.
Just before I ask a question, just, I'm sure Sam will correct me if I'm wrong, and seek legal advice on this. I don't think we can adopt a blanket policy for any area of the city. We would have to consider each case on its merits. But obviously, the points you make about more people living there and noise, then that will be considered by the licensing committees on all applications. But I don't think we can adopt a blanket one. What I will say, though, is if you share those criteria with me, actually on a night-time economy working group, which is not just licensing and not just the city centre, but I think those sort of issues can be really helpfully fed into that. So if you can get those to me after the meeting, I'll certainly put them to that group. But we will consider this application on its own merits in light of the points you're making.
Thank you, that's very fair. And I'll make sure that you get a copy of what I've just given to you by email as soon as I can get it to you.
And can I just ask, could you just tell me a little bit more about Changing Chef, sort of the membership and the meetings and sort of the representation?
I haven't disclosed this. We were formed in 2012 under the title of Sheffield City Centre Residents Action Group. We've been meeting from 2008 to represent the people who lived in the city centre. But in 2012, we were advised by the city council itself that we should formulate ourselves into a recognised group. And so we called ourselves Sheffield City Centre Residents Action Group, or SCRAG. And I think a lot of the council officers would remember SCRAG and think, oh, not SCRAG. But in fact, 2017, we were revised by a young person who was a member of our committee that that was a militant-sounding name. We weren't militant people, but they say it was a militant-sounding name. And she said, you're trying to change the city centre in the light of, you know, what's happening in the city centre, so why don't you call yourselves Changing Chef? We're a voluntary group. We have some financial support from the council, a little bit of support from the council and from the Business Improvement District. And we're currently working on a project to put a musical pocket park into Fountain Square, the lower of the two little pocket parks in Fountain Square. And I hope this time next year, you'll see 12 percussion instruments in the pocket park, and it'll all have been re-landscaped. And it's perfect for anybody, all family members, to go and have a look at it and play on it. An idea that we brought over from the United States, which is very popular. And we're part funding that, the council's providing the rest of the funding. So we look at projects that we think will improve the city centre, and I have to put this in the same category, we think this will improve the city centre as far as people who live there are concerned.
Could you tell me a little bit more about the consultation that you've had within your group on this particular application, and any discussion you might have had?
Yes, we do meet on a regular basis. We've got eight members on our committee, fairly broadly representative of people living in the city centre. We, until Covid, we held public meetings on a regular basis, once a month, but obviously Covid has put a stop to that. Since then, we've been holding them online. And the view of the company is that if you're going to live in the city centre, this is going to be an essential part of making it habitable, that you can't have all-night noise and live there comfortably. And as I said in my presentation, sound travels upwards, unfortunately, and if you live in an apartment in the city centre and there's a lot of noise going on down below, you can't avoid it. I've actually put triple glazing in my apartment for this very reason, but not many people can afford to do that. And so, you know, I'm fortunate, but other people aren't so fortunate. And just in certain parts of the city centre, there's no call for three o'clock closing. And we would put this into the category, and we discussed this amongst ourselves, that, you know, there will be places like West Street and Carver Street where that's traditional, it's always happened. And I live not far from, just off West Street, so I accept it. But in other parts of the city centre, it's not really the kind of place that you would put 3am closing, because it isn't that kind of place. And this falls into that category. There will be others in the future. I might be back again, I'm sorry. But there will be others in the future. But at the moment, this is the one that stands out, and because it's a new licence, we believe, then we thought it should be considered by the committee.
And you have mentioned it, but I wonder if you could just tell me a little bit more about how the nature of that area has changed since the previous licence lapsed and plans for it, how it is developing?
I don't think it's, the only change since the previous licence lapsed is the Kangaroo Works that's coming on. You can see it in the distance on your photograph there. It's not too far down, about probably less than 100 metres down the road from the Devonshire Cat. And that's going to be a massive development, of course. It is a massive development, 364 apartments in there. But the locality around the Devonshire Cat, we weren't objecting at the time when the Devonshire Cat's original licence was granted to this kind of thing, but we now realise that it is absolutely surrounded. On top, all sides, apart from the side that goes across towards Devonshire Green, apart from that corner, everything around the Devonshire Cat is residential. Now, the Washington Pub is down the road, at the end of the road, on Fitzwilliam Street. But the Washington Pub has always had that licence. It's not so residential, nothing like the same density of residential, and we accept that that's grandparent rights. You know, that, we wouldn't object to when the licence comes up for renewal for the Washington Pub. But this is different. This is a new licence, it's right in the middle of tour buildings, a lot of them full of students. And now with the Kangaroo Works coming on board, it will not just be students, it will be, we hope, it's going to be families, retirees, and young professionals. And those are the sort of people that really can't afford to have their overnight sleep interrupted.
Thank you, that's really helpful. Do members have any further questions for Mr Sefton at the moment? Sam, is there anything you wish to ask?
I just wondered if you'd had any contact in terms of the change. So obviously, the Devonshire Cat's been shut throughout Covid and thereafter, so probably for about two, two and a half years. If you've been approached in terms of how the area's been different, if there's been any improvement, or if it's remained the same in terms of noise or public nuisance, anything like that?
No, the answer to your question is no, we haven't been approached by anybody suggesting there have been changes to the area. However, we have to remember that a lot of the problem comes from students. We've got 60,000 students in the city centre, and weekends are a problem with students, and to a lesser extent with people having a good night out. But I would accept that the Devonshire Cat is not in an area where people would be going for a good night out. But they'll be leaving the Devonshire Cat at 3am in the morning, between 3 and 3.30. And it's, the problem for noise particularly is the students that have a good night out, a group of males generally, but sometimes females, but particularly the males. And they come out and they're singing and they're making all the noise that they like to make when they're walking home, which tends to be, tends to be sort of coming up the hill from the Devonshire Cat, or coming west from the Devonshire Cat. But of course, with the amount of additional accommodation that's going into the city centre, it could be going south or east from the Devonshire Cat, because there's so much accommodation now being built in the city centre. I mean, it's exciting. I was on Radio 4 this morning advocating for Sheffield on the Today Programme, saying what a wonderful city it is because of all the redevelopments taking place, and we're ahead of the curve in national terms because of what we've done since Sevenstone collapsed. But I didn't put the point to the BBC that there's a downside to this, and I've explained that.
Thank you. Miss Shield, are there any questions you would like to ask before you go on to your presentations?
Just a couple, really. I think I heard you right, saying you live on West Street and have lived in the city centre for 17 years.
Actually, just off West Street, I live on Convent Walk in Glossop Road Baths, which is a building that ultimately belongs to Sheffield City Council, but is on a 150-year lease, and I have an apartment in Glossop Road Baths.
I'll assume the committee know where that is in relation to this set of premises. You've lived there many years, and you know that as a fact, this premises was licensed since at least 2005 in this area. Have you ever had cause to complain about the premises during that time? And if you have, have you got any evidence to support any complaints you may have made to the Licensing Authority, or the police, or the Environmental Health Authority? And I am saying to you, and you are asking that question too.
We haven't had any specific complaints about the Devonshire Cat, but we have had complaints about the collection of industrial waste, premises waste, in the middle of the night, 4.30am, from areas around the Devonshire Cat, where this is another problem that we have with pubs, that the waste that they produce, the bottles, the empty bottles, the food waste gets connected, from a lot of them, in the middle of the night. And whilst this is not part of our objection per se, it is a part of disturbance in the middle of the night. And we have had complaints from around that area of restaurants who are having their refuse collection taken away usually between four and seven o'clock at night, stroke morning. And we've raised this with the city council, and we would like a ruling that says that you shouldn't come into the city centre before seven or 7.30. And when we've raised this with the people collecting the products from these restaurants, the answer, and I've made the point, why don't you go and collect indoor or totally at that time in the morning? The answer is, oh, they wouldn't let us do that. And yet the density of people in the city centre is far greater, and the noise is just as bad. So specifically, to answer your question, not about the Devonshire Cat, but about some of the premises in the area whilst they've been open and that's been closed, about overnight disturbance from collecting the refuse.
And so it's fair to say, your objection isn't per se to issues with the Devonshire Cat historically, and your objection is the general area and the general city centre and the general, if I put it like this, cumulative impact?
Yes, this is, this is the first, it's a test case. I'm sorry to impose this test case on you and the council, but for all the reasons I've said, no, it isn't an objection to the Devonshire Cat. As I said in my presentation, we want the Devonshire Cat to be reopened. It's a great pub and it's a great spot, but we just don't want it to be opened until 3.30 in the morning. So this is the first shot across, as I said, a joined-up strategy for the city council that we are filling the city centre over the next 10 years with a lot more people, and therefore we have to make the rest of our strategies work for those people and for the commercial premises. I understand the balance, and for the commercial premises. We have to make the city council into a joined-up structure that makes it work for everybody.
Could I just check then? So this is your first objection as Changing Chef, or did you object as part of SCRAG as it was before? But this is your first objection, is it, to a new licence?
Well, yeah, the answer is yes, but that's because everything's changed since the days of SCRAG. You know, the city centre is changing so quickly because of all the cranes that are up there, that we're now into a different situation. The population is growing rapidly, and now we're into a whole different ballgame.
That's fine, I was just checking if it was your first one, that was all, just for information. That's fine, I was just checking if it was your first one, that was all, just for information. So then, just looking at your pictures, you mentioned the Washington. And on one of your pictures, which shows the Devonshire Cat there, I believe the building at the end, the black building, or certainly down to the side, that's the Corporation, isn't it?
It is, yes.
And I think that currently has a four AM, three, four AM licence?
It does, but it's not applying for a new licence.
Entirely accept that. So in summary, within the immediate area, we currently have two that have a three AM stroke four AM licence, the Corporation and the Washington. And then we have this site, which previously had a three AM licence but doesn't have one at the present because it lapsed. Is that fair?
It is fair, but as I said, it is applying for a new licence and the city's entered in a new situation. And as I mentioned in my presentation, we accept grandparent rights for places that have been, had a licence for a long time under those terms. But this one, once it had a previous licence for those terms, it's applying for a new licence.
Entirely accept it's applying for a new licence. But it has a history, as does the Corporation and the Washington, of having a late licence. And you confirmed there were no complaints around the Devonshire Cat previously when it had its late licence, correct?
Yes, apart from the problems of picking up the refuse in the middle of the night.
Sorry, I thought you said on that, the refuse was in the middle of the night was other restaurants, you said, not the Devonshire Cat. Which I accept is the area, I'm not saying anything, except if I understood it correctly, you're saying problems with refuse being collected from the area by other restaurants, but nothing specific to the Devonshire Cat at any point?
No, it's been closed.
It's been closed recently, I accept that, but it's had a three AM licence since 2018 and it's been licensed since 2005 and in fact, under the old licensing regime since 1999?
Yes, we accept that, but it's applying for a new licence.
Nothing further, I don't think, thank you Chair.
Then straight back to you to detail the application and respond to the objections which have been made?
Sir, members of the committee, thank you. I'll submit the application on behalf of my client. Mr Khan is the director of the applicant company Prime Land Limited. And you've seen the terms of the application. If I can use the bundle of documents that is on the, was on the website, I'll just pick out a few pages, but it is important to put into context. The application is at page 13 and page 16 sets out very clearly where we're going with this application. You as members of the committee will know, you must deal with each application on its individual merits. This is a new licence application, absolutely. But the individual factor merits of this is this is a premises that has been licensed for many, many years. The licence lapsed, was lost through no criticism, no enforcement action, no issues. It may well have been a casualty of Covid, much of which we've seen in the city centre and continue to see in the city centre and nationally in continued fallout. There should be no criticism of the premises for that. But when it was first built, it was built with planning permission for a bar, A3 use with residential above. And those pictures very well show the current situation and the situation that is there for many, many years. I accept that Kangaroo Works, a little bit further distant, using the representing party's words, has and is in construction. But you can see that immediately around the premises are flats that have been there for a significant number of years. And that's important to put into context. The history is, had a licence from the old magistrate in 1999, I believe. And my firm has acted on and off throughout that period, dealt with the conversion in 2005 and dealt, I didn't deal with it personally, with the variation in 2018, so some four years ago, to a three AM licence. It has operated without issue throughout that period of time. And that is extremely important. I understand the concerns that are being raised in a wider context of the city centre. But we're talking about this set of premises in this application. My client has purchased the premises and has a view to operate it for what it is, a licensed bar. Hence we've come back and asked for the licence. We discussed before we lodged the application for some time what to apply for. It's somewhat unusual in that, in fact, so far as regulated entertainment is concerned, it's really quite restricted for the centre of town. But the decision was made that to seek to get this licence back, we would make the application in almost identical terms as previously. And that set out on page 16 and throughout the application. Except that, in fact, on page 23, we offer additional conditions to those that apply to the previous licence. So we adopted the previous licence hours, licensable activities, restrictions. And we added in additional ones that you may expect to see in an application from my firm on behalf of applicants for licensed premises. So a lot of thought went into how we would approach relicensing this set of premises. And that's the application that went before you. The applicant or director, Mr Khan, his experience has other licensed premises within the jurisdiction and I suppose the nearest one would be the Wick at Both Ends, owning that, it is tenanted out. But he is not someone just coming into the city centre, he has been here for many years and has interests in the business, so he is committed to the city centre. And the city centre absolutely relies on its residents, but it equally relies on its commercial element, its industrial element, to blend together. And it is a city centre and it has a varied offer of entertainment. And this was part of that. And we want it to be part of that again, without undermining the licensing objectives. But again, over its 20-year history, I can rely on the fact there are no issues in undermining the licensing objectives. So the question then is, what about the responsible authorities? You will know, key to the licensing regime and in Sheffield, respond and become involved if there are issues or potential issues. And in particular, the police, Health Protection Service, Protection of Children from Harm, Environmental Health Service, all of which, if there is the evidence to support a representation to restrict an application, against an application, or otherwise, they will make representations. You will know from your papers that there was one representation and that was from the police. And in discussions, their concern was around alcohol going outside of the premises. Nothing further, no issues with crime and disorder, no issues with low-level nuisance, which the police do become involved with, no issues from the Environmental Health Service around noise nuisance and escape, no issues from the Health Protection Service around the structure. I did have a discussion with one of the Health Protection Officers and they said, are you doing anything different? They said, no, the layout is as it was before. Could we liaise with them when we look to reopen for obvious reasons around potential for a building that's been closed for a period? Yes, we would, so no representations. And I will, perhaps in my summing up in a little bit more detail when I get there, refer to the guidance, but that is important. On the one hand, you have us as the applicants, if you like, a commercial entity, yes, we want to reopen this premises, give value to the area. On the other hand, you have a body that want to restrict. In the middle somewhere, you have the responsible authorities and not a single representation opposing this application because there are no grounds for opposing the application. That is extremely important. So you have one representation. It's an organisation, Changing Chef, I've seen it, I've looked at that and I understand. Previously SCRAG and I think probably some many years ago, the representations and IP in relation to applications there. Entirely accept the ability to make a representation, but it must come under scrutiny and stand up to scrutiny. And everything that you have heard this morning, there is not one single criticism of this site, how it's operated previously. The applicant, what you have is a reference to the area and dealing with the area and licensing in the centre of Sheffield. And you will know, and I perhaps again may come back to this in my summing up, that there are avenues so to do. And Mr Chair, you mentioned about liaising in that regard. That's a matter for outside of this committee. This is dealing with this application. What will the impact of this application being granted in the form requested be on the licensing objectives? Will they be promoted or will they be undermined? And there is no evidence that it will be undermined. And we're not coming from a neutral position that this is a brand new premises. We are coming from the position this is a new licence application, absolutely. But we come from a premises whose licence has lapsed in recent times, because it was only September last year that it lapsed. And it had a licence until three o'clock since 2018, which I might add, my firm did deal with and did not go to hearing and was dealt with without objections. And would have gone through the similar process to this with advertisement on the press, on the premises in the press and around, and not one representation. And in this case, the flats that are shown, which I say have been there probably not as long in some cases as the premises themselves, so it's not changing the area, have not made one single representation of concerns in relation to this matter. And if you look at both of those pictures, you will see the Devonshire Cat on the lower floor and the upper, it's a building that included those flats at the time it was constructed. And those around and about are about the same time. And the importance of mentioning the other two sets of premises are of course, the only difference between this set of premises, the Devonshire Cat, and the Corporation at the end of one part of the street, about 50 yards, 60 yards away maybe, similar distance, perhaps a little bit further for the Washington. The only difference is that Covid bit, the licence has gone and we're here applying to reinstate by way of a new premises licence. I reiterate, it is a new licence application, but it has a history. And the representing objecting party indicated they have no problem with the Corporation licence where it is. They have no problem with the Washington where it is. They had no problem with the Devonshire Cat. And it's equally important to mention that this application is not pushing out any hours. Again, because 50 yards one way and 50 yards another way, our premises with the same, in fact slightly longer hours in certain cases. So that's very important. So that's why we make the application, that's why we ask for reinstatement essentially of what was there and would ask you to consider that. And if you look at the representation, it very clearly comes through page 39, page 40, page 41, a concern for the general area in the city centre. Well, there are methods for dealing with that, but this application is each application on its merits. I would say some of the accommodation, a lot of the accommodation I think surrounding is student accommodation. I'm not going to make any comment about students or otherwise. It's not my place to defend a particular set of residents other than to say, there are a lot of residents, a lot of students, and a lot of students who enjoy the nightlife of Sheffield as one of the foremost nightlife places in the country, without causing any issues. And so I wouldn't want any aspersions on students or the others. A little bit older than students, perhaps up to my age, even older perhaps, that would still want to go out and socialise in a premises such as this. So please don't draw an adverse inference when there is no evidence there. I will pause for questions and just complete, and I will come back to this, I will refer to Thwaites, the case around, that's a variation, but it's the same thing about fear. And it appears to be at best a fear that this might cause a problem, but there's really no evidence. I did hand in, or rather, I did email yesterday just some information to your licensing officer. All that was, was to say I would be mentioning the Corporation and the Washington. And so I don't know if you have copies available, I took printed copies off the register if you need them. I also sent in a copy of the last licence that was in existence for this premises, the Devonshire Cat, which lapsed last September. And I made reference to the fact that I would be referring to Thwaites. I'll pause there, but I have copies of anything you may need that I've just referred to. Thank you.
Thank you, we do have copies of the previous licence for this premises. And I know Jane was going to make sure if we needed them, copies were available of other licences. So I'll open up this up to questions. Lewis, is there anything you would like to ask?
Thanks Chair. It says that the use in your application, it says that the use of door staff will be risk assessed on an ongoing basis. Were door staff utilised with the previous licence, was that necessary? Did you have any issues that they had to deal with?
From my experience, and I have to say from my experience, because Mr Khan obviously has only recently acquired the site, from my experience, we never, they may have used door staff on occasion, but they never had the need to. It certainly never needed to be imposed on the licence. And I would know because my firm would have been dealing with the premises going back to, as I say, 1999. It was never that type of premises and there's nothing to suggest otherwise. The reason for that condition in there is to offer up to the committee and to the police that, look, we will keep this under review and if it needs door staff, we would do so, but not as an imposed specific times, as with many other licences in the city.
Thank you, thanks Chair. Shaun?
Oops. Sorry. Because you spoke fairly swiftly, I didn't catch the names of the other premises which your client actually also has as part of his portfolio.
He has various property interests, I think the one in the town centre that I would refer to would have been the Wick at Both Ends.
Right.
Which is very much in the centre at, I think it's West Street. It is West Street, yes. And he's got some others out for the field, the Cherry Tree, I think, in, which is Cartonall Road a little bit further out. He then has non-licensed property interest as well. I think my point is twofold. He's been based in the city for a long time. No criticism for anyone else that's from out some other city investing in Wood, all very good. But he's a local man, committed to the area and has interest in other licensed premises, so he's aware of what his responsibilities are. And he tells me he's also personally had a licence in Sheffield for over 30 years, I presume, in the city centre, so very experienced.
Could I just ask, could you tell me a little bit about the target audience? Who are we wanting to attract into the Devonshire?
In all likelihood, the site is going to be tenanted out, as with, I think the Wick at Both Ends and other premises as. We have a lot of interest, I wouldn't say a lot of interest, some interest, it's difficult times. We've come out of very difficult times. You will know the hospitality industry has perhaps been hit as hard as any other industry and has a lot of burden. But Mr Khan's taken on the site, acquired it from its previous owner and has some interest from existing, if I say existing operators within the city with a good track record. Nothing has been put pen to paper, pending the licence not least. And one operator that operates currently in Calum Island that is aimed more towards the, certainly not really towards the student market, I would say that, more mature market. But the options are all out there for the operation. But whoever we get in will ensure that they act in accordance with how it's operated previously without issues.
I know the application details, what you're intending to do to control public nuisance. But I just wonder if you could just tell me a little bit more about that and certainly your experience, how those measures have worked previously in other establishments?
I think so far as this site is concerned, the structure is the structure and has been since it was first built. And there have been no issues with, well, I say there have been no issues. There is no evidence of any issues whatsoever that have come to the attention of the responsible authorities or any residents or anybody else about noise escape and that kind of matter. So far as customers at the premises, well, of course, there's prevention of public nuisance. But the guidance also tells you that away from licensed premises, there is individual responsibility. But we would ensure that the operator we get in would be a reputable operator that would operate in the correct fashion. And of course, we'd be subject to a lease that if they breached it, could be terminated. We have the other operations, we have the Wick at Both Ends, which again, I'm trying to think, I think my firm have dealt with on occasion, but not aware of any issues there and the tenants that they have. So I don't see a particular issue, certainly nothing from their town centre experience.
Can I just, if there are issues at any time, would there be a contact number for residents who could inform the establishment immediately and have that addressed?
Sir, if you felt it was appropriate and wanted to add a condition that there would be a contact number available for residents nearby or something of that wording, I'm sure you have a wording, I'm sure I have a wording somewhere that's come across before, then be more than happy with something of that nature.
I thought so then, I went blank again. Sam, well, I'm rethinking, oh, sorry, yeah, very simple. Why these hours? What is it about the existing hours that appeals to you?
Well, I think, I won't say that's the wrong question, but it's a question of the hours were there before and it gives greater flexibility. And another point in Thwaites, which I'll perhaps come back to in something else, this case, it says, it's there for flexibility as much as anything. But it is a city centre operation and it is in an area where there are later operations. And if it's well run, as it will be, and doesn't cause any issues, there's no reason it shouldn't have those hours because it has had them before and there's no evidence to suggest that they shouldn't be granted those hours. So it is around flexibility of operation and making financially viable. I think, I'm not an operator, I don't know about the history of the members of the committee, maybe operators. Don't know about the history of the individuals that have made the representation in the organisation. But the reference to midnight, there is no evidence around if you can't make it work until midnight, after midnight, you can't make it work. That's just not correct. There are many premises in the city, there is a late night operation. And individuals do want an offer later in the evening and there's nothing wrong with that. And the Licensing Act is specifically designed to allow that, building in place protection. Prevent crime and disorder, prevent public nuisance, allow public safety, protect children from harm. If you can uphold those objectives, promote those objectives, then you can have the hours you request. I throw in the fact that we've had that for a number of years and there's no evidence of any issues of any sort.
Sam, is there anything you'd like to ask?
I think you may have already answered it, what you said in terms of the 3am for flexibility. Would the intention be that it's going to be full until 3am every day and to have people in for those hours or?
I think that's a very, that's almost impossible question to answer. I'll do as best I can, we'll go for a 3am licence, but you know, we'll be opening earlier in the day and probably not using it so much during the week, may not, it gives that flexibility. But we would look towards ensuring a sensible dispersal. I can't remember if I put anything in about dispersal on the policy, but could have a dispersal policy to manage people away from the premises.
I think I was just a little bit concerned about condition three and the prevention of public nuisance even. Noise or vibration shall not emanate from the premises so as to cause a nuisance to nearby properties. Just in terms of you operating, that might be a little difficult to ensure 100% of the time potentially.
Well, I think we have an obligation not to cause a public nuisance as do all premises. So we put that in, it's a matter for you in the committee if you want to change that. It hadn't had any comment from Environment Health Service.
Just finally, sorry, I think I missed it. Did you say that environmental health had asked to come and visit if the layout was going to be different? Or you invited them and they were all right with it?
No, this was the Health Protection Service and it was around, I think their concern was around the premises that had been shut for a period to ensure that it was, I'm no expert in this area, deep cleaned. And it was around the physical safety. But they had no concerns with the application and made no representation. So it was more around that, of which we said yes, of course, no problem.
Shaun, can I bring you back?
Sorry, I was just busy looking at the Wick at Both Ends on my Wikipedia here. I know, and I recognise it's a gastropub. And I was wondering with these premises and you're saying you're looking for tenants, will that be one of the options? Or will it be purely looking for a bar setting rather than anything that more mature people like me might prefer? I'm just thinking of, I think that a gastropub certainly has a different clientele leaving of an evening than perhaps a bar.
I think all would be welcome, but we're looking at different options. I'll just have a quick word with my client. I think we're looking for the flexibility, we're not closing ourselves off to anyone. I think we have interest from those that operate other premises with a more mature clientele in mind. Does that answer the question?
Mr Saptin, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, I'd like to just run through a few quick questions if I may, Chair. The first one would be, I take it you agree that the city centre is changing and is becoming predominantly residential?
No, I don't, I don't think anyone ever said that. It's a city centre, it has industrial and commercial units, which in fact are not shown on your two pictures. But I think diagonally opposite is certainly some commercial stroke industrial units not shown. The city centre is, as you would expect with one of the largest city centres in the country, has still some industrial units from its very well-known industrial heritage, has commercial units, it has a lot of development going on, it has businesses. And it has great facilities for sport, theatre, all sorts of things, late night operations, including the corporation and many others. And yes, residents in the city centre, who I think are drawn, personal opinion again, to a mixed nightlife and the ability to enjoy. Living in a city centre comes with a certain attraction and level of noise, not nuisance. So no, I don't accept it's going more and more residential or exclusively residential. I think there are residential developments, don't say that, I'm not saying all at all. What I say is those round here, the factual position is that premises, the Devonshire Cat has been there at least as long as all the residents that are there at the moment, the student residents and other residents, without causing any issues.
Thank you. I was content to hear you say, and I know this is true, that there's been no opposition from council departments, only representation from the police and nobody else has objected. I'd just point out that that's a concern to us, this is for the benefit of the councillors, not for the benefit of the applicant. But this is a concern to us that in changing the city centre as it is, as the council is, because of the heart of the city proposals and the fact that it's going to become, in our view, largely residential, there isn't a joined up strategy between the different departments. And I welcome what you said Chair about sending you a copy of what I've said, because that could go on to the other committee you mentioned. But we do feel as residents that the resident side of this is not being considered in the new strategy. It's interesting that the Deloitte's report, 84 pages of it, if you had time to read it, does mention a lot about the importance of residents and it splits the city into, I think it's six different sections and mentions that each one will have a group of, a large group of residents in those six sections. So my concern about the comment, which is correct, the comment, no opposition from council departments, that it would be great from a residence point of view, if the council did accept that there's got to be a balance between, you know, what happens for residents and what happens for the night time economy. So that's not a question, that's just a comment related to the council.
Can I answer that and take it as a question? Because it's important to maintain and say again, as I think I did in my submission. The application was submitted to all of these responsible authorities as is required under the Licensing Act. And members of the committee have to assume that they looked at the application and what they took from looking at this application individually was that there was no grounds to make a representation against it. And that therefore is a positive. So it isn't that they didn't engage, it is that they looked at it. And in the police case, they said, we want one condition, that's all we want, we're happy to do that. In the case of the Health Protection Service, they said, when you reopen, you get this licence, I have concerns about you getting the licence. Will you look at, make sure it's safe when it does reopen? Absolutely we will. Environment Health didn't make a representation, so it should not be in any sense taken as adverse or not looking at things. It's looking at it and no representations against the application were made, that's important.
Right, thank you for that. You mentioned that there were no representation from nearby premises. This is a really big failing in the licence application system in Sheffield. Nobody knows about licence applications. It's not like planning where the sign goes on the lamp post outside and everybody knows that something's going to happen. But licensing doesn't do anything like that at all. And so nobody knows there's a licence application.
That is part of the application process. It has to be advertised on or near the premises, exactly the same as a planning application.
Oh, you do surprise me because I've never seen a licensing application on a lamp post and I've lived here 17 years. So either the people that you're giving the job to do aren't doing it or I've missed them. But that's an interesting point.
It doesn't have to be a lamp post, it just has to be on or near the immediate vicinity of the premises. So it may well have been on the building itself. But that's part of the licensing act regulations.
Really does surprise me. Okay, well, that's an interesting point.
Can I just answer the question which notices were on site? There were at least four, if not five around. You will see both boundaries, if you like, of the building in the two photographs, they were around them. My client put them up, I actually saw them, they were up for the requisite period.
Question and then one final point Chair. Do you guarantee that it will be open till 3am in the morning, seven nights a week?
No, absolutely not. Well, I'm saying we want a licence to allow us to do that and use the flexibility. It may well be open seven days a week to 3am, but it may well not. So in answer to your question, I can't guarantee that and I don't think my client can guarantee that. It's about the flexibility.
Okay, final point then. Would you agree with me that, when you said there'd been no complaints previously about these premises, would you agree with me that once customers are outside the premises, which is when they make the noise, they can't be identified to those premises? So it's almost impossible to say that any particular licensed premise is causing a problem for the local residents because you can't tell which licensed premise those people have come from. Would you agree with that?
I don't think I can answer that question. I think that's a question about areas, cumulative impact and matters of that nature. I don't think I can answer that question.
Thank you Chair.
Then your opportunity to sum up the application.
I'm going to refer to a bit of the law. I appreciate that members of the committee will understand it, know the law, but it does need to be said. And I think it's fair to go through it in a little bit of detail, I'll try to be brief. I'll preface by saying, everything I said in submission stands. And this is going to be a good addition, re-addition, reinstatement to this area. And the aim is to add something to the area for the residents nearby, as it has done before. And that is why we're making this application and it was considered very carefully before it was submitted. And I say that by, again, when you retire, if you look at the application and the restricted hours in relation to regulated entertainment, it has no history of any issues whatsoever, there's no evidence of that. And that then really, curtailing that part, brings me on to the law. And I'll try to be as brief as I can, but I think, starting with the point that was mentioned about people away from the premises. The licensing policy, which has hardly been mentioned at all, you have a licensing policy which has been considered and was last updated, as I understand it, in 2021. There are mechanisms for the police to look at imposing, asking for a cumulative impact policy. And I think your committee has been considering this over the periods of time, but you don't have a cumulative impact policy. And the objections to this application barely mention the premises. They mention the area of the city centre and talk about cumulative impact. There is no cumulative impact policy. That is incredibly relevant to this application. Secondly, and looking at the guidance which you are guided by, paragraph 2.21, around prevention of public nuisance. Beyond the immediate area surrounding the premises, these are matters for the personal responsibility of individuals under the law. An individual who engages in antisocial behaviour is accountable in their own right. However, perfectly reasonable for licensing authorities to impose a condition following representation to require the holder to place signs at exits from the building encouraging patrons to leave until they leave, be quiet until they leave the area. And it goes on. Absolutely on point here, that's what the guidance says and it's absolutely right. There is personal responsibility for every member of the public in relation to licensed premises as there is in everyday life. So you are guided by that. Imposing conditions proportionate appropriate, and we've discussed perhaps a telephone number and perhaps that's the right way to go or sign it, whatever it might be, specific to this application. Paragraph 9.12. And for the benefit of everyone here, I will read that out. It's the role of responsible authorities, 9.11 says, responsible authorities automatically notified of each application, which they are here and you've heard what I've said on that. 9.12, each responsible authority will be an expert in their respective field. And in some cases, it is likely that a particular responsible authority will be the licensing authority's main source of advice in relation to a particular licensing objective. For example, the police have a key role in managing the night time economy and should have good working relationships with those operating in the local area. Police should usually therefore be the licensing authority's main source of advice on matters relating to the promotion of crime and disorder objective. However, any responsible authority under the Act may make representations with regard to any of the licensing objectives if they have evidence to support a representation. And I say again, I, my firm deals with the responsible authorities very, very regularly. And they're far from afraid of making a representation if they feel it's the right thing to do and they have the evidence. There isn't any representation here. That is a very positive thing, you have the request for one condition from the police which we happily agreed to. So that is key and is guiding you in relation to this matter. There are other avenues, other venues for concerns in relation to cumulative impact or whatever that might be. That is not here and that is not this application. This application is, is this a good application? Is there any issue with the applicant? No. Is there any issue with the history of the premises? No. It is a new licence application, I'm not arguing it isn't. But it is a factor that there is a significant history going over 20 years in this area. And the other point I will make is just in relation to the case of Thwaites. I'm sure you've had it quoted to you many times. It is a case that was around a variation and there were residential objections about extending the hours of a pub. And there were no police representations and it ultimately went through two appeals, I think. And the court said, the committee has to be very careful in relation to applications of this nature where the police or other responsible authorities don't object because they are the primary sources around the Good Practice Guide and the guidance. And it is also a situation where fear is not a good ground for refusing or, in this case, restricting the application. And that's extremely important. And as a subpoint, it said, granting an extension doesn't mean you're saying this site will open, in our case, till 3am every day. Shouldn't be assumed you are. And in that case, they talked about flexibility and here, that applies. I can't say one way or the other, I'm not saying that. But it's a good application. Nothing adverse throughout the whole of this hearing said against the premises and its history. So this will, in my submission, in my client's submission, be a positive addition to the city centre with the same hours as were there previously prior to Covid. And if this premises can reopen and hopefully thrive, it does need a licence that allows it to do that. Thank you.
Well, thank you to both the applicants and the interested parties who've given us plenty of information to help make the decision. So could we have the option, please Jane?
Okay, so the options open to the committee this morning are to grant the premises licence in terms requested, to grant the premises licence with conditions, or to reject the whole or part of the application.
Thank you. Could I now ask the interested parties and applicants to leave the room with the licensing officer while we take legal advice? officer while we take legal advice and come to a decision? And we'll invite you back in and tell you what that is as soon as we've made that decision.
Thank you for a very fair hearing, Chair.
Certainly. The representations you've all given have been really helpful, it's nice to get some clear information on which to make a decision, so. Do you remember to turn the microphone on? Have we got the camera back on as well? It's lights, camera action. So, thank you all for your time and your representations this morning, it's been much appreciated. The decision of the licensing committee this morning is to grant the licence as applied for, but with the additional condition that you offered, that you will provide local residents with a contact number so that if there are issues, they can be raised immediately. The reason we've granted that is that in accordance with the Licensing Act, we have no evidence to suggest that this premises causes a problem that would require us to restrict its operation. However, as I'm sure you know, Mr Sefton, if there are problems in the future, I'm sure we all hope there aren't, but if there are, then this matter can come back to the licensing committee who can consider the licence and impose conditions or indeed revoke the licence if it's not operated in a responsible manner. But we do accept, going on from Mr Sefton's points, that there can be a bit of a disjoint or there has been a big disjoint between licensing and planning around issues across the city, not just in the city centre, and I think we will be working more closely or we will be pushing that, that's something that we were pushing this morning, to get a bit more joined up on those sorts of issues. Certainly, I'll happily feed anything that you wish me to into the Night Time Economy Group and I'll suggest that, you know, Steve Lonnie might want to invite a representative from your organisation to come along to that if indeed he hasn't already. I would also suggest, you know, whether you and Mr Khan, you know, you both have a vested interest in things going well in the city centre and whether you two want to exchange numbers and keep in contact about, you know, issues in general and the running of this premises. I can't impose that, but I would certainly encourage that because it's good practice. And again, we've no idea who's going to be sitting on the licensing, you know, we've just had elections, everything could change, but I'm sure whoever's sat in my position or on the licensing committee would again, happily link in with your group, Mr Sefton, and if you want to invite us out, we would come and have a discussion about how licensing can perhaps work better for you in the city centre.
Thank you, Chair. I expected that you've done what you would do, but it's the first opportunity we've had to make this point, as I mentioned before, and so we felt that it needed deliberation by members of the council and officers. And Mr Khan and I have been just chatting outside, so I'm sure what you've just suggested would be a good idea, but the principle of having a contact number is a very good one as well. It's just as I mentioned before, that when people are out on the street, having left licensed premises, it's very hard to say they came from a particular licensed premise, but nevertheless, that condition is approved. Thank you.
Chair, only to say two things. One, as you speak, I leaned to my client and said, how do you feel about your mobile number to Mr Sefton? He said, absolutely not a problem, so I'm sure that will happen. And secondly, just on a personal note, this premises holds a place in my heart because it was one of the first I licensed back in 1999 when I came to Sheffield as a very young licensing lawyer with slightly more hair.
Well, thank you for that. I believe, are there rights of appeal, which Sam was left detailed?
Sorry, I was going to jump in there. Just to finish on the formalities, you both have rights of appeal, Mr Sefton, because the licence has been granted in opposition to your representations and for you guys because a condition has been added. So we'll get notice within five working days of this hearing detailing all the points that were considered and how members came to the decision, so should either of you wish to appeal that decision, that's within 21 days to the magistrate court. Thank you.